I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have some wonderful special recognitions this evening, and I will turn it over to Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for all of you who are in attendance this evening. So we have a number of recognitions to make, but this one here, all of them being special, but this one being especially so. Some of you, all of you are aware that we had a young student at Pakicog last week who collapsed on the playground due to an undetected heart issue. And due to the swift actions of the people in this room, I have great news to share that he is doing very well, still is in the hospital, but is breathing and eating on his own. In fact, Mrs. Stanek, Mrs. Dio, Ms. Gaborio, and Mrs. Cashman went down to visit him yesterday and sent pictures to us, which, there's nothing better than that. So, I know we hear lots about heroes in this world, but I would say to you, those in the room, certainly acted heroically last week. And I know that I speak on behalf of Max's parents. Excuse me. This is a joyous night. I'm sorry that I'm choked up. But, on behalf of Max's parents, they extend their heartfelt thanks to all of you as well. So with your permission, what I'd like to do is read aloud the names of the individuals who were instrumental in making sure that the outcome that we realized was the one that happened. So if you could stand and stay standing. Jennifer Stanek as the Pakicog principal, Kristy Dio, school counselor, Carrie Cashman, school nurse, Jane Gaborio, instructional assistant, Chief Stephen Coleman of the fire department, Captain Sean Steele, firefighter and EMT James Conway, firefighter/paramedic Kimberly O'Brien, Deputy Chief Glenn Johnson, Captain Justin Brigham, firefighter/paramedic Scott Davis, firefighter/EMT Rick Nicholson, and representing the police department, there were others in attendance as well, school resource officer Brian Kennedy, and Sergeant Kenneth Charlton. Our heartfelt thanks are extended to all of you.
I'm positive that we're gonna have some comments for you. I don't even have to ask, as I usually do. So, I'm going to let my committee start off, and maybe we'll start right down the end. Ms. Harrington?
Yeah, I have some things to say. I can keep from crying. My daughter goes to Pakicog and is friends with the student, and it was really hard to hear what happened. I just, I can't express enough how thankful we are and how thankful my daughter is and how thankful this, I'm not gonna speak for the committee, but all of us are, that we have such compassionate people in this town that come together. From the compassionate staff at Pakicog to the first responders, you guys all worked as a team, and it's just truly impressive. It takes a village, and I feel like you guys are all heroes, and I thank you so much.
Well said.
You're gonna hear this a lot, but thank you, thank you, thank you. We're so grateful. This truly is a parent's worst nightmare, you know. I thought we were glad that he's doing better, but, you know, the parents themselves even said, "Never know what could've happened if that, if we hadn't have had so many folks there, right there to help." So, you know, thank you. You know, every parent in this town, I can assure you, is resting much easier just knowing that that could've been their kid, and we would've been there just the same. So, thank you.
I just wanna say thank you, and I just, it's just so nice to know that all of you are here. I know I've called my mother, and Scott's come, and I'm like, "Oh, thank God you're here." And it's, it's just so great. I mean, you're just, you're just the best. Thank you so much.
I would thank all of you for doing such a great job in saving a child's life. You went on, you did your job, and you did it as heroes. And you keep doing that every day. This is just not one incident. But I know if you talk to people in town, there's many more incidents that go on that you people provide your great expertise on. And, you know, I've had problems with my wife at one time, and you people were there right away. I mean, there was no questions asked. You were there, you got things taken care of. You probably saved her life, too. And just knowing that we have such good people in these positions, you're all heroes no matter what. And I'd like to personally thank you for saving that child's life. It's a hard thing to do, it's a hard thing to feel, but you did it. And you ought to be very proud of every one of you, all the departments that were involved. I praise you. Keep up the good work. And thank you.
Well said. We always knew that you ran a very professional department, just as we run a very professional school, so I thank the school staff. But when I see the number of calls that, that you respond to every year, as a police department, as a fire department, EMTs, it's, it's unbelievable. I can't believe the numbers that you respond to. And this is just one time that it's really become public because it's, it's a young child, it's someone that, that everyone's close to. It really hit home with us when I first heard about it, brought tears to my eyes, 'cause all I could think about was if it was my child. That being said, I'm sure there are a thousand other cases where someone feels just as grateful as those parents or as grateful as we do. It's, it's amazing what you guys do. You're on the spot, you take care of it. I don't know how you do it, I could never do what you do. It's, it's amazing. We're so thankful. I was just as emotional when I heard that the youngster was going to be okay as I was when I first heard the news. And I just can't, can't say enough about what you guys do. I always had complete confidence in you, but any time that we can bring that into the light and let everyone know about it, and let you know just how much we appreciate you, we're more than willing. And I always make sure that I say hello to you and thank you for your service whenever I bump into you and tell you what a good job you're doing. But whenever we can bring you into the limelight like this, and I know you guys don't like it, but too bad, you're here, and we're gonna continue to praise you. So, thank you very much for your efforts. Dr. Brunel?
If I can just follow up, too. Just to emphasize the partnership that we have between the police and fire, starting at the top with our safety advisory team that is comprised of police, fire, building inspector, and school representatives that meet on a regular basis and report regularly. But it's a true partnership in the community. Everyone was there just to do the right thing for that child, from the school department, the police, the fire, paramedics. So, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. And Wayne?
I just want, would like to say another thing is, I would like to thank the superintendent for being on top of this from day one. She kept us informed all the time. Didn't matter what time or what it was, she always updated us and let us know how the child was doing. And I know I didn't say anything about the principal or the nurse, but they're all part of it, too, and I wanna thank them, too. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you. Do you have any comments for us, or anything that you'd like to share? No? I'm not surprised. I know how humble you are, and I know you just go about your business, and you do a fantastic job at it. And that's, that's from the schools, to the, to the fire department, police department, all of you, EMTs, just phenomenal. Again, thank you so much. And thanks for taking time out of your busy days to come and join us here so that we could celebrate your accomplishments. Fantastic.
If you want to stay just through the end, with your permission, through the end of special recognitions, there's one more thing at the end. Yeah?
Okay, great.
So we have some other special recognitions. It's the time of year with graduations and such, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce Scholarship recipients for 2017. As you know, the Chamber of Commerce is tremendously generous with our students, so I'll share with you who had received a scholarship. So the $3,000 Steven Lucas Memorial Scholarship has been assigned, given to Meg Bierigard, who will attend UMass Amherst. Each with $1,500 scholarships. Monica Tran will attend Western State. Julia Sypek will attend UNH. Liz Inasoskis will attend Ithaca College. Andrea Bolduc will attend Brandeis. Emma Lyons will attend UNH as well. The Paying Forward Chamber Scholarship for $500 goes to Brianna Montville, who will attend UMass Dartmouth. And the Memorial Scholarship recipients, the $3,000 major David L. Broder memorial scholarship goes to Brady Antonopoulos. And the $1,500 Chamber Member Scholarships go to Ayana Bedard, going to UMaine Orinow, and Lindsay Bertheu, going to URI. So congratulations to all of those deserving students and their families. Not noted on the agenda this evening, Dr. Lozay and I had the opportunity to attend the Hanover Scholarship Program. And this year, there were four students recognized from Auburn. Meg Bierigard, Emma Lyons, Leah Healy, and Monica Tran. So that's the most ever recognized in Auburn and speaks to the great job that those young women do. We also have some art student recognitions for the Congressional Art Competition. So they'll be honored at a reception on May 20th, and those being recognized are Connor Collison, oh, not gonna get that right, Meg Bierigard, Jenny Rumrail, Jacota Gleason, and Olivia Obreski. Many of those names you have heard many times before. In fact, Olivia Obreski, she is also to be recognized for the mixed media category at the Congressional Art Competition. Her piece, which was titled "Home in Poland," was also published on a website, "They Draw and Travel." And there were links provided, and hopefully you were able to take a look at that. And she will be heading off to Leslie University in the fall. You've heard me speak of the Les Mis play that was performed by the high school, and happy to share with you that seven TAMI nominations have come as a result of that. It was just outstanding performance. So for Best Supporting Actress is Renee Moran. Best Featured Actor is Derek Brigham. Best Featured Actress is Anna Petrovitz. Best Musical Director is Ginny Bailey. Best Lighting Design Rising Star Award is Gil LeBonte as young Eponine. The Rising Star Award is Tyler Poschkas. And a Not Your Average Chorus Member Medal winner goes to Zachary Hoga. And then finally, before our final tribute, I wanted to make you aware that a middle school special educator, Monique Mizone, has been awarded the Nancy Davis Welch Memorial Professional Development Scholarship from Mooney Math Consulting. That being in recognition of her dedication to the field of mathematics education. So we agree that Monique is certainly worthy of this, and wanted to bring that to your attention. But as one final item, and the reason I asked our responders to stay is, we are approaching the one-year anniversary of the date that Auburn Police Officer Ron Tarantino was tragically killed in a routine traffic stop in Auburn on May 22nd, which is Monday. As we remember him and honor his sacrifice, let us be guided by comments made by his wife, Tricia. "The best way to do so is to live our lives in the same manner he lived his. Generous of spirit, staying focused on the important things, and giving back to others. I ask that we continue to keep Ron's wife, Tricia, his sons, Ron III, Spencer and Kyle, his parents, Ron Senior and Sharon, and his siblings in our thoughts and prayers as they face this first anniversary without him." I would ask for a brief moment of silence, keeping Officer Tarantino, his family, the Auburn Police Department, and all first responders in general in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. If we could just have you all walk through this way so we could just personally congratulate you, that would be phenomenal. I know you've had enough of the praise, but we haven't.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being there for us.
Thanks. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, buddy.
How you doing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's Kristy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. We hope you're healthy.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for everything, though.
Thank you. What a scare. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Bye, guys. Have a nice night.
Bye.
Well, we made it through without losing it completely, so that was good. It was close.
Oh, my voice was cracking.
Yeah. Mine as well. It's, yeah. It's, it's great knowing that they're available when we need them.
Yeah, just a phone call away. I don't think we've ever lost a student in school. I don't know. I don't think so.
I think so in school.
AC? Not working.
No, I don't know. Is it too loud or something?
No, I think we can, is this open? Oh, my goodness, we never did.
It's been on all afternoon. I don't know what was it?
Okay, I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Brunel.
Thank you. So with the election yesterday, congratulations to Mrs. Harrington and Mrs. Holloway. I will now accept nominations for Chairperson of the School Committee for the time period of this evening through May 16th of 2018.
Can I nominate George Scobie?
I'll second it.
Are there any, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, and I will now turn it back over to Chairperson Scobie.
Thank you. I didn't even know it was missing. Congratulations on being re-elected. That's great. It's a pleasure working with the two of you. And now I would entertain a motion to appoint Vice Chair.
I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Wayne Page as our Vice Chairman.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, you're signing that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta earn it back.
Boy, oh, boy.
Okay. Got that out of the way. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will move right on to the Student Representatives Report.
Thank you. So we're winding down on the school year. Seniors are out next Monday. Everybody else is out June 22nd, I believe. Sports teams are in full swing as usual, winning games, track meets, just general events as well. AP testing has come to a close. MCAS testing has also come to a close as of today, and everybody's just enjoying the last few weeks of school.
Excellent. Any questions? No? No? How are finals going?
Finals are coming up next week. A little stressful.
Okay.
Not too hard to handle, though.
There you go. Now, do you, do you have open campus after your finals are done, or do you stick around to the day?
Yeah, we have open campus next Tuesday and Wednesday for finals, and then we're kinda just floating senior week events, things like that.
Awesome. Well, I wish all of you the very best, and I'm sure you'll be well-prepared and make use of your time. Don't hurry too much for that open campus.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, I would seek approval of the minutes of May 2nd and the minutes of May 3rd, 2017.
I'm with the motion to approve the minutes of May 2nd and May 3rd, 2017.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And we now move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first up, with your approval, I'd like to invite Mr. Fahey, our fabulous Director of Facilities, up to give a Buildings and Grounds update as well as a Green Community Grant update.
Time on the new podium. Looks nice. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm here to present my Buildings and Grounds Spring update, but it looks like we just jumped right into summer.
Yeah.
With that being said, at our high school and our middle school, we're entering our second year with the organic lawn treatment at our softball field and also at our new field over here. The purpose of the organic lawn treatment is really to keep up with our IPM plant. Okay? We can't put chemicals down, we can't use weed and feed, you know. We'd love to kill the dandelions, but there's a process of what you have to follow, 'cause so many kids today are allergic to something. So, therefore, Ford's Hometown Services providing us with this organic lawn treatment, and it's a great program. They do is they slice seed it a couple times a year, they do some herbicides, but they're all right in our plan. So, this is our second year of a seven-year commitment. So, the nice thing about it is, I don't think we saw too many dandelions so far this year, which means it's working. I think about three years ago, we kinda had an epidemic of dandelions where they're just overgrown, and bees come on, kids are afraid to go out into the field. So, it's working. So we're happy about that. And you all know that our DPW comes in and mows the grounds. William Bruckless and his crew do a fabulous job. In our high school, when we first built it, as you know, we bought the equipment to do the field turf. So what they do is they, they come in and they groom it three or four times a year. The DPW does it off of our equipment that we purchased. And because our fields are getting older, we're requiring more, more, more use, so what we do is we bring in field turf again to come in, and they do a more, very, very intense cleaning and grooming. What they do is they pull up everything. They pull up, you know, fingernails, they pull up, you know, earrings, bobby pins, sucks it all up. It's amazing what they can actually pull up. And the whole idea of this is to prolong the life of these fields. So, it's working out really well. Off of that, too, we just hired a consultant to, we're gonna be upgrading our infield at a baseball field, we're gonna be turfing the whole, the whole complex. All right, as you know, each year I come up and I tell you about the migration, okay? And the DPW, they do a great job, and our baseball team does a great job, you know, pushing the dirt back, but it compacts so hard that it's a safety issue as well. So by turfing the whole field, we're also gonna be able to take a lot of relief off of the football field, 'cause now we could move soccer or some other sort of sports event onto the baseball field, because the whole area would be turfed. So it's, you know, it's a win for us. We put it in our capital five years ago, and it's time to get it done. So, we're hoping to get that done. Bids to go out in the summertime, this is something that you can do in the fall, we feel we can get probably the best price to do that then. So, we're excited about that. So, other than that, at our high school, we've had some minor fence repairs. Can't say enough how much use that feels, those fields get. You know, it's seven days a week, whether it's, you know, organized events, gypsies coming down, you know, the place gets used, you know. I don't know how else I can say it, but gypsies, they come in, you know, they fly in, they play a game, and they leave. So, at our other schools, they're all in pretty good shape. At the Day of Caring this past year, as they do every year, our principals take a key role in it, and we get mulch, and they look for volunteers, and they go out and they, they plant it and put down the mulch, and it really looks beautiful, you know, between the flowers and the bushes. Our buildings look pretty sharp. So the kudos go all out to them, because they're the ones that orchestrate it. They're the ones that were there in the pouring rain, I think, two weeks ago. So, good for them. So that pretty much takes care of our exterior of our buildings. So, to jump to our interior of our buildings, we talked a little bit about this before. We changed all our lightings to LEDs at no cost to the district. We take advantage of any kind of program that National Grid puts out. So, those are all free. So, we do see a slight reduction in our kilowatts each month. Like to see a lot more, but the nice thing about it is our classrooms are bright, they have fresh LED lights, and they should last 15 to 20 years. On top of that, we took advantage of another rebate program where we replaced all the exterior lighting at our high school. So we figured the high school had, figured each pole is about 250 kilowatts, okay? By changing the tall LED, those are called metal highlights, they're big, they're a big bulb. Really, they don't even last a full season. What happens is we have to get a lift, come back and replace it. So, National Grid had a rebate program where it was roughly $10 a fixture to replace them to LEDs. So our electrician, Tony Discano, we went to the lift, changed them all out, and I gotta tell you, when they work, it's fabulous. I mean, the looms just light up the whole place, better than really the 250 metal highlights. Now, we have had a couple glitches. We've had some, you know, some critters in the poles, and needless to say, they chewed some wires. So unfortunately, I think the last town meeting, it was actually out, 'cause they shotted the wires. So, it's an ongoing maintenance issue. So, I mean, I guess they gotta live somewhere, but we wish we wouldn't have them live in our poles. So, and also our high school, we're replacing our VFDs. Those are drives that actually control our big motors, so it extends the lifetime of those. So however, they're, they're 11 years old, so they're starting to drop out. So we've replaced those as needed. At our intermediate school, we lucked out, issues didn't happen this way. The last half-day of school, our hot water heater let go. But, half-day of school, no lunches, we're actually able to get it fixed that night, next day, no one even knew we didn't have hot water. So it worked out really well. Usually doesn't happen that way, but, but it worked out well. At our elementary schools, both Pakicog and Brymer, I'm happy to report that we replaced all the locks to the lockdown 911 key method. So now, the nice thing about that is all of our buildings have the lockdown function, have a 911 key. So that's, that's pretty impressive. And the nice thing about that, we actually did that all in-house. So our own custodians did the work. So it's, it's pretty good, it's amazing. We also rewired the infrastructure at Brymer, and we'll be doing Pakicog next. We all know Pakicog roof is, is set to get replaced this summer. MDM, contracting company, won the bid, same company that did Brymer. And I gotta tell you, the team that, that we have, the OPM, the architect, I mean, the level of detail that they do, I mean, in all the projects that we've done, they, they're here. So we're very confident that we'll be coming in on time and on budget on that project. So the nice thing about that is all our roofs will be pretty much prime real estate for solar, which is the next, the next piece. We'll be reaching out to a consultant, WRPA, to, to see what they recommend for, for solar on top of our roofs. As you know, our middle school was built for it. We opted not to install it for numerous reasons. And we're in early stages with this consultant, but one thing that he does recommend is that we might be putting such an array at the middle school and perhaps at the high school that we may not need to go up onto the roof at our other schools, because things we have to consider is, is the load. Even though we're replacing the roof, we still have the structure of a 1928 building and an addition of 1960. So those are things that we have to be mindful of. So, but they seem to think that the amount of solar rays that we can install over here could support the rest of the district and perhaps share some of the load from the town as well. 'Cause don't forget, we're in that net meeting agreement that was put on by the town, that we benefit from it as well. So what they did was they basically took our kilowatts, their kilowatts, sold it off to a solar farm. We're getting the credits for those now, so our electric bills are actually decreasing. So, I mean, it'd be wonderful in a couple years if we have, you know, if we have a zero bill.
Wow.
So that's, that's, it's worth the investment for the consultant to bring on. I tell you, we do get a lot of support from, from Matt up at the Town Hall, in his energy, wisdom, I guess you can say, that he took on as a new role, and he's doing a great job. So, we're happy with that. And also, at the high school, we just signed on to a, they call it a net metering enhancement program, 'cause what we've been doing over the years is, anytime there's a rebate, anytime there's, any kind of a project, we take advantage of it. Because I say it every year, the money goes right back into our classrooms. So, this one here is a no-brainer. We had it done probably about six or seven years ago, where summertime, when the load in the whole G2 section is such high demand, what they do is they ask, they ask customers to, to shut down, shut down their power. It's a way to guarantee that you don't have brownouts. So by opting into this program, roughly, we're gonna get about $5,000 for two years. And all we have to do is, is shed the load for two years. And all we have to do is shed the load for twenty hours, twenty hours a year. So, meaning, what that means is on a Wednesday, they call me up, or they send me an email the night before, and they said, Joe, at one o'clock the next day, you gotta shut down. So, all I do is I go on to building management system, put the building to sleep. I can guarantee the shed a hundred KWs, and gotta figure by one o'clock in the afternoon. Now, first thing you gotta think of, well, geez, you don't want the building to be, to get too warm. But this is primarily in the summertime, and two, you gotta figure, if one o'clock screws up by two, they won't even realize that it's actually off. And it's only for five hours each, each event, up to twenty hours. So, it's really a no-brainer. So, again, we're taking advantage of it. So, now, this brings me into the green community grant program. The town signed up to become a green community a few years back, and we've kinda been getting the benefits from it each year. Roughly, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that what the green community does is they put back into the community for projects. And the biggest loads in the town, really, unfortunately, are the school buildings. So, the first year that this started, we pretty much focused all on our school buildings. We put all our projects into the high school, knowing that there's work to be done at the library, there's work to be done at the police station, there's work to be done in other town-owned buildings. So, but we focused on the schools at first. We went through a couple rounds. Now, what we're doing is, last year, we put in for a steam trap upgrade at Bryn Mawr. Unfortunately, we didn't meet the criteria. We applied for it again this year, so it's in the queue. Hopefully, we get approved at the end of this month, we'll know. Another project that they, that we put in, far as another lighting upgrade at the high school. And the town has quite a few projects in here as well. And it's a collaborative effort that we do. And again, we focused on what's, what's the biggest need for the town. So, again, we'll know that pretty much at the end of the month. So, outside of that, we got a few projects going on in the summer, more HVAC work at the intermediate school, continue work over here at the new, the new middle school, working on dehumidification in the gymnasium for some time at the start of next school year. And doing a couple renovations, small renovations, juggling some classrooms around. So, it won't be as hectic that it has been for the last couple of years, but we'll be just as busy. And, and again, this could not happen without your support, our leadership team's support, and most of our custodian's support, because the work they do, it's phenomenal. I think my operating budget would be probably twice as much than it is right now, because they do, they take so much pride in their work, and it shows. They would rather put the money back into the classroom. So, it's not all talk, it's all, it's all true. So, you know, I'm proud to work here. So, any questions?
This one, Joe. When there's a project, say, at the Bryn Mawr school, do you sometimes move the custodians from the other schools over there to help out?
Absolutely.
Oh, great.
Yeah. And I talk about my custodians as a big key ring. You know, there's so many different keys, they have so many different talents, that it just takes to plug in. I have, I have great painters. I have great guys that can pull wire. So, if they're doing, or just mechanically inclined, so if they're doing a locking project, I take a couple of the other custodians and fill in for their jobs. So, it's, so everyone sees the results, and everyone's part of it. It's a great big team.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Fay?
I have a comment. Just that, thank you for all you do. I think you're like a magician. It's you come up with pulling rabbits out of your hat all the time, and I know I've said that in the past. And I, I know some of the janitors that you speak of, and they're very compassionate about, you know, their jobs. They care about the kids and the schools, and you're right, they, they would rather see the money go into the classrooms, and they'll go above and beyond to make that happen. So, I just appreciate all you do, and thank you, and you have a good team, so.
I do, thank you very much.
Any other comments, Mr. Fay? Wayne?
I would just like to say, great job too, Joe, with all your initiatives to saving money and, you know, all the guys you do have as custodians, how they go, like Jess had said, above and beyond what they do. But they also got a good leader, and all these grants and stuff and everything you go out and get, and the stuff from the electric company, and, you know, you're always thinking, you're always trying to move forward, and that shows great leadership. And you got the, the workers underneath you that do a great job, and it sounds like they're all, they all work very well together. And I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report, and thanks for what you do, Joe.
If I can just add, so, to echo the comments made and the sentiments I know of all the people, you know, Mr. Fay, he is always quick to thank others that he works with, whether it's within his own department or departments across town. And those are all true statements. But it absolutely starts with the leader, and Joe is, the expertise that he brings, the talent that he brings, and not only that, but the compassion, the relationships that he has with everybody. It's an honor to work with him as a member of the leadership team, and, and we're very excited, and the community of Auburn as a whole is really lucky to have Joe Fay in this capacity, so, I'm to be sure and say that.
Thank you. But it's, that's at the real top, though.
There he goes again.
Yeah, there he goes. Great job, Joe, thank you.
I think we oughta give him a round of applause. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the report as well.
You're the man.
Okay, moving along.
So, the next item, unfortunately, we'd had a great modified exchange with Madrid, as you know, over the past few years. And it came really as a surprise to Mr. Kramer, but there was obviously something that had taken place. So, Christina, who is a close friend of his there, has said that they're not gonna be able to continue with the exchange, even for the near future as well. But they had, obviously, Mr. Kramer has been working with his students, and he is now requesting that they be, seek your approval to actually make a trip to Spain, which is where they would've been going. But this one will obviously involve staying in hotels and some sightseeing. They won't actually go to the school in Madrid that they had been to before. It is my recommendation that you approve this, based on that fact and reports that we had looked at. It appears that there is not a warning or safety warning for Spain right now. We can certainly look to that. But this is a trip actually for next April. Would've been approved earlier with the other out-of-state or out-of-country ones, but he didn't know about the change. And thanks.
Sorry, question through the chair. Does this, is this instead of France next year?
No.
No, this would actually be different students, so his students would be Swedish students. So, this would be, and in fact, I think next year, they'll just be going to Quebec, I think. So, the France isn't every other year trip, which this may become as well possibly.
All right.
Yeah.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Kramer and his students to go on the, on the trip to Spain.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's nothing going on this way.
The next item I wanted, speaking of the generosity that we have from so many within the community, April twenty-ninth, I had shared with you that Britt Swanson had a very successful Earth Day program. And I just want to recognize those businesses and individuals who really helped by making donations of one sort or another, and then ask for your acceptance of those. So, first, to Morgan Blair. She was the muralist who did a beautiful job on the mural and provided guided student workshops in the arboretum. Also, thanks to the Massachusetts Cultural Council in appreciation for the Stars residency grant. You've already accepted that. That brought Morgan Blair to us. To Bell's Lawn and Garden Center for the generous donation of mulch for the arboretum. A thank you to Mrs. Sarah Poshkus for her donation of Earth Day signage. To Polo Beverages for their donation of refreshments for the Earth Day celebration on the twenty-ninth. And finally, a thank, thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Scott Johnson of Tri Emeralds Landscaping Company for their generous donation of a cherry tree for the school grounds and expertly planting it, so it'll beautify the grounds for a long time. So, it is my recommendation that you accept all of those with thanks.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve, or to thank the above-mentioned individuals and companies for their generous donations of time, talent, and goods to help make Swanson Road Earth Day the great success that it was.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to add that a lot of these people are actually former students that are in, at Swanson Road, and I recognize quite a few of the names.
It's, it's nice.
You know, it's nice they're in town now with businesses, and they're still giving back.
Still going.
Yeah, it's nice.
Yeah, great sense of community. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next item, I was outreach by Jean Piatt, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, from the class of nineteen seventy-seven. They were having a fortieth class reunion, and they had collected some additional funds in the amount of five hundred dollars. So, originally was going to, wanted to get some guidance on where to donate it in terms of the schools. So, I shared with her the premise around the helping our own fund, and they did donate five hundred dollars to what she described as this wonderful fund to help give back. So, it is my recommendation that you accept that with thanks.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of five hundred dollars from a class of nineteen seventy-seven to be deposited to the Helping Our Own Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I noticed they were the dandies, not the rockets.
Yeah. I just have a question about the Helping Our Own Fund. What type of parameters do you work with as far as that account goes, and to what, what is the total that that amount can hold?
So, currently, the balance in that account with the deposit of this five hundred is just about four thousand dollars. So, that's come from different classes. And we did receive the check for a thousand dollars for hosting the Saudi educators, and the one from Kuwait went in there as well. So, the next step, we've not actually spent any money from that. What we'll plan to be working on as a subset of the leadership team is bringing forward to you a recommendation, so that you develop some sort of a policy on how that goes. So, we've had some informal discussions as a leadership team. There's certainly many areas in students in different regards across the grades that could benefit, but we just wanna make sure we're really thoughtful with it. So, we'll bring something back to you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
So, we did wanna share with you, as you know, the custodians and instructional assistance contracts have both been ratified by their respective groups. Each of those contracts received COLA, cost of living adjustment increases of two percent each year for three years. We did look to bring some consistency in terms of sick leave, buyback in the number of sick leave, as well as bereavement leave. We're really trying to be consistent across the district. We did add, the custodians will be getting two sweatshirts as part of their uniform that they need to wear during the winter, during the school year. We already provide them with shirts. And then also put in, and this was a request of the principals, that IAs to attend up to a certain number of meetings after school per year, that we will pay them their hourly rate, just to be sure that they're kept in the loop on important items at the school level. So, it is my recommendation that you approve both of those contracts. I wanna thank Mr. Page, who sat with us for the custodial's contract, as well as Dr. Luzé and Mrs. Worsbicki, who sat on both of those, actually, the instructional assistance contract piece, and all those representatives in the groups. They really went very smoothly. It was really quite agreeable.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept both the contract for the custodians and for the instructional assistance for the three-year period, July one, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
I'd just just like, like to say thank you to all of them for their hard work for the district.
Yeah, we, we already thanked the custodians, but yeah, the IAs as well for everything that they do, and for the good faith bargaining that they took part in. It sounds like it went smoothly, and that's huge. I wasn't a part of it, but of course, when things aren't going well, you hear about it. So, I, I'm gathering that they went in there, they sat at the table, and they were willing to bargain, and that's what it's all about. Wayne?
And I'd like to thank the superintendent self, too. She thanks everybody else but herself, so I guess I'll give her thanks for doing a great job.
Absolutely. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
So, as we do on a quarterly basis, the third quarter, quarterly report from January to March of two thousand seventeen for Southern West County Educational Collaborative, it is my recommendation that you approve it, and I'm happy to report that things, not only financially, but educationally, continue to go well there.
I'd entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the quarterly report as prepared by Ms. Beth Fitzmars, Executive Director of the Southern Western County Educational Collaborative for the period of January to March twenty-fifth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
So, I included in here a copy of the letter sent to all of the casting crew for Les Mis, and also wanted to share that the original play, Tundaleo, in Prince's Key, that the middle school students performed this past Friday and Saturday, was also a success. So, letters were sent to those students, too. My niece gave it a two big thumbs up, so, that's quite an endorsement.
Wow. That's great.
Wanted to make you aware, Auburn Youth and Family Services, in a collaboration with the Auburn Firefighters, so they offer a summer program. And during one of the weeks, July seventeenth to the twenty-first, the Auburn Fire Department is actually gonna be running a leadership academy. So, it's gonna be taking the students from Auburn Youth who sign up for this, and taking them on some trips and doing some things here. So, they had requested whether they could utilize the district's van in order to do so. So, they'll keep the number under, obviously, they'll be seated appropriately. I think it's just a great collaboration, so I just wanted to make you aware that they'll be utilizing that during the summer, when we will have little need to do so.
Excellent.
And wanted to share with you, I believe I shared with you last year, that I was elected Secretary Treasurer of the Worcester County Superintendent's Association, so my term has come to an end, and now I've been elevated to Vice President for a year, so.
Congratulations.
Which actually holds less responsibilities than Secretary Treasurer.
Okay, you're moving right on. Okay, we now move on to unfinished business.
So, just a reminder, the next school committee meeting will be on June seventh, and that one, we typically start at six-thirty, just in recognition of particularly the younger students who'll be attending. It'll be at Auburn High, which is really focused on the community service presentation. So, look forward to that always each year.
Yeah, that's a great night. And we.
And that'll be after graduation.
Correct.
Wow, time's flying.
We now move on to new business.
So, I wanted to make you aware, as school committee, this one and ones in the past, have always asked that we really pay particular attention to class sizes, particularly at our elementary schools and lower elementary. And just recently, Dr. Luzé and I were made aware by Dr. Chamberlain of rising numbers, and some of these are new enrollments that won't actually start until the fall. So, for class sizes at grade one between twenty-six and twenty-seven, it being such a pivotal year, really is just far too many. So, the three of us with others, Mr. Fay, who was part of that, Mrs. Reedy and others, and tried to look at what are some options of ways that we can address this issue. So, we first looked at, you know, whether we could bus some students who are currently in kindergarten over to Pakachog, that would be to reassign them. Educationally, they would get a great experience there, as they do at Bryn Mawr School, but it would be taking students from, students and their peers, as well as staff that develop relationships. And all it would be doing would be transferring a two larger class size issue from Bryn Mawr to Pakachog. So, Bryn Mawr has, I mean, there's only two primary schools now, but at one time with the four elementary schools, it was the only school that had a separate cafeteria and a separate gymnasium. So, because of that, we have the ability to build a classroom, and Mr. Fay, he has looked at that extensively and has a plan to do it relatively inexpensively. And it will make a great space, it will be the equivalent size of the classrooms that are already there, and they'll be able to utilize the gymnasium as a cafeteria now. So, they'll have lunchroom tables in there. And how I propose to pay for this, assuming your approval on this, is we, as you know, we utilize our school choice monies that come in from middle school and high school as an offset every year. And what we try to do is to maintain a balance that we leave in one school year, the full amount that we'll need in the following school year. And what we don't wanna do with that is, because in a sense, we've created a structural deficit. So, if at any point in time, the committee, this committee or a future one decides they don't wanna participate in school choice, that's a three or four or five hundred thousand dollar hole that we will need to fill. So, that's the reason why we always try to save it. So, it is gonna require us to really watch every dollar spent, which we already do, but in the short term, I think it's the right investment to make for these students, and in the long term, educationally, by getting these students into a class that's more of a twenty to twenty-one students per class versus a twenty-six to twenty-seven, some may think a difference of five or six students at that level doesn't have an impact, it level doesn't have an impact. It has a tremendous impact, particularly kindergarten and first grade.
Yeah.
So it is my recommendation that you approve this request, the addition of another first grade at Bryn Mawr School, and we will keep you updated as we make progress on this, but the first step obviously is to get your approval for that.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the addition of another first grade class at Bryn Mawr to be housed with part of the cafeteria, just as the library currently is.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion?
I have a question, that I actually posed to Dr. Brunel earlier this week, but I thought it would be nice just to, I guess, have everyone hear the same questions and concerns. I'm, I'm just curious, and this is not a proposal, it's just a question, as far as how we assess the tipping point for when we consider that we might need either another building, or do you need to utilize some land we haven't yet sold off from Bryn Mawr or JB, I mean, from Mary D or JB, or kind of how we, how do we decide that we've outgrown our current elementary schools? How do we, what data do we need for that? How, what's the lead time that we would need to prepare for that based on all the people that tend, seem to be moving into town? So, if you want to share?
Sure. So through the chair, I will say, we, we do look at that information on an annual basis, and actually multiple times during the year, the principals report when, when new students move in. So we have done a projection looking at about 10 years. The part that's the unknown for us is how many students are going to come into kindergarten each year, because the census data that we have is never accurate, quite honestly, because not everyone completes the census. So that's a, a difficult thing to do. But based on the projections that we know, and making some assumptions that our K incoming classes will stay the same, it's a big assumption to make, we're actually going to see a slight dip in our enrollment. So I think that this is really a two-year bubble. What I could do as well is, there are companies out there that will come in and do a formal enrollment projection. NASDAQ is one of them, that will come in and do it. There's a fee for it. I could look in to see what that fee would be. And another thing that we have talked about with Mr. Fahey is the MSBA, so these past two cycles, we've been part of their accelerated repair projects, really for roofs, boilers, and windows. If we were going to submit, if we were at that stage, and I would say, I don't think we are yet, I think we need more information, if at some point in the future, the first step would be to submit what's called the Statement of Interest to MSBA. We would propose, you know, why we believe the Auburn Public Schools should get back in their queue for a potential new building. Typically, in speaking with other superintendents, you could put in a Statement of Interest for multiple years in a row before it is even considered by MSBA, because obviously they look at totality with the monies that they have and the, the conditions in school districts across the Commonwealth. That window opens once annually, and if I recall correctly, I believe it opens in January or February and closes in April. So that's a potential thing to look at. But I would suggest the first step would be, if I bring back to you some enrollment projections first informally, that we don't necessarily pay for, and take a look at that. I can certainly speak with Matt Bonoit, Town Planner, to see are there large house developments planned? I mean, the one that had been talked about seems to have, is no longer a concern for the time being. So I think that we need to, it's something we need to stay on top of and, and pay attention to. But all of the data that we have suggests that this is really a, a two-year bubble, because when they join with Pakichog at Swanson, the issue goes away because it even though, they've got eight classes there instead.
Thank you.
I have a question. So for Pakichog with the incoming preschool program, how many students does that add to the total?
So in total, the preschool classes will probably be about, yeah, 40 or so maybe in total. So it would be, their numbers right now are probably about 260, so.
250 something.
250 something, so it'd bring it to about 290 or so.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I know I mentioned this to you on the phone, but I figured, one of my main concerns about the Bryn Mawr in adding the classroom was that the playground wasn't adequate over there. So I think it's important that we make sure, you know, to make that a focus for sometime soon.
No, absolutely.
To upgrade that in some way.
Through the chair, we recently are, we're having some budget meetings and looking at CIP, so we do have some monies there to do some playground work. I will say, the cost of playground equipment is.
It's crazy.
Astronomical.
Yeah.
So it, it'll be done piecemeal over time, but we've actually got it in our CIP for a number of years to come. So we will definitely be doing some work this summer.
All right, great.
Just can, just to clarify, so that's to the Bryn Mawr playground, is there also something being done to Pak as well for the preschool? I, I apologize back.
That's okay. Through the chair, the work that was done actually to the Pakichog School, which would have been in the summer of 2015, in preparation for the former Mary D students going up there, we remember we lowered equipment and stuff, and it's actually a larger playground already than what the Bryn Mawr one is. The Bryn Mawr one was just a, one of the smaller playground areas. So I think that there's ample at Pak to handle that, but we can certainly look at it, and if needed, we can spend some money there, too.
Well, thank you. And then is it suitable, though, for preschoolers? I just don't know what, what the law says or what we need to do for.
Yeah, through the chair, I, I think that Mr. Fahey would be the best one to know that, but I think in all likelihood, it would be appropriate, because the preschool at one time was housed at Mary D, and they utilized the same playground. So I think the height restrictions are probably the same, and we can certainly look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
If I could say something. So the town planner would be the one that would know if a builder is talking about developing land.
Correct.
Because every now and then, you get, you know, now there's one talking about up at, off of Rochdale Street, putting in a whole, a whole group of houses. So those are the kind of things if the plant, town planner will keep in mind to give us that information and things.
Through the chair, I will say, he, he's really wonderful about that.
Oh, that's good.
And I've sent him, you know, written correspondence about it, but he's very quick to pick up the phone and, and to answer calls and things, so.
Awesome.
So he, he really is very helpful, and he's very aware of the concerns expressed by the school committee about that potential large development. So, yeah, we, we have a, it's a great working relationship, too.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, good. We don't want to be surprised.
No.
No. Great points that, that you made, Dot. It's, it's, we really do need to keep an eye on that, and I think maybe, maybe the first step is, is figuring out what it would cost to have that done, to have the assessment done. The, the only thing is, it's kind of a catch-22, where we don't, we can't project what's going to happen in six years, and it's going to take six years to go through this whole process, never mind putting it to, to a vote of the town. I just think, at this point in time, the, all we can do is keep an eye on things, be, I don't think the, the residents are ready to throw up another building just yet, especially if we were able to have MSBA climb onboard, we were able to get something done, and it was in the works, and then we find out that our projections were off a little bit, and now we've got empty classrooms, and, and the residents paying a little more in taxes. So it's a great point, and certainly let's, let's keep an eye on it, and if we find that, that assessment evaluation comes back saying that, you know, and, and between the conversations with the town planner, that something's going on, then maybe we jump onboard and at least take our chances, throw our hat in the ring, and see what MSBA can do, do for us. But for the time being, I think we have to ride it out.
Right.
I have another question.
Agreed. This was by no means a proposal, by the way.
No, I know.
Just my curiosity.
No, I'm not.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying it was, it's a great, it's a great point. We certainly have to keep an eye on it.
Good point.
Dr. Brunel, I know earlier in the year, or last year, we had mentioned there was like a portion of land over by Pak. Would we ever have the ability to add on to that building, or, you know, I don't know if we could ever add another level. I don't think the lower structure could ever handle it, but.
Sure. So through the chair, prior to my arrival, there were, when they were looking to, to do a reconfiguration, there was consideration to adding on to the Pakichog School, I believe. So I could certainly speak with Mr. Fahey. That parcel of land actually dipped rather dramatically down, but I believe that they were intending to do so on the present site. But I can look into that and get back to you.
So it'd be another, another wing, not another floor.
Right, right, right.
The thing is with.
Even another modular or something.
Sure.
With all of the, all of the codes and, and energy codes in place and building codes in place, once we start getting into an addition like that, sometimes it ends up being the cost of, of a new building.
Yeah.
Or, or at least, I'm close enough to it where it's, it's not worth doing it, but no, if that was a possibility, sure, or if it was just a, a modular classroom or two, but once you start actually adding on to the existing building outside of a modular classroom, it gets a little bit hairy, everything, all the handicap has to be taken care of, all the asbestos has to be taken out. So, yeah, it's quite an endeavor, but yeah, if the land was available, who knows, someday we could probably build on it, build a separate structure. All right, moving on.
So I think we have to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we had the second and all that discussion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much. Wanted to share with you, you should have at your seats in a yellow folder, the, my superintendent of evaluation, faculty materials. I put together a self-assessment for, not only in the DESI form, but on our, our local form in terms of the goals that we had set and agreed to. If you are able to complete it and get it back to Mrs. Sotner by a week from Friday, she'll have time to tabulate it and available for it to be read aloud at the June 7th.
Okay, any questions?
Is that time, huh?
Comments?
Sorry, what was the date for that?
May 26th, through the chair.
It's in the.
Okay, moving on.
The next item I wanted to share with you, we were outreach, districts across the Commonwealth were, from the Department of Ed, seeking districts to pilot a survey, which is designed to collect data regarding incoming kindergarten students' early childhood programming experiences. So after discussing it with Dr. Lozay, Dr. Chamberlain, Mrs. Stanek, as well as Mrs. Reedy, we agreed that it would be a beneficial thing to do. Just wanted to make you aware of it. We actually put it in a Survey Monkey and emailed it out to the email addresses of our incoming students, incoming K students. So hope to share that in the aggregate, the information with, with DESI. So I think it'll be helpful information for them to have as well as for us.
Hmm, interesting.
Just a reminder, the, you received this evening, the class of 2017 graduation invitations. It will take place at the high school at 6:30 in the gymnasium. And then finally, to share with you, after conversations with Mr. Handfield, and to change, we had originally planned to have the graduation next year on June 1st. We're going to change, that is our recommendation to change that to June 8th. With the busyness of the end of the year, AP testing, MCAS testing, to try and give a little bit more breathing room to students and to staff, so that way, everything doesn't feel quite as rushed. So we followed up with Mr. Handfield again. Students would still participate in school the same number of days, but it would give them a little bit more of a relaxed environment, yes, they lead up to such a celebratory time of year. So wanted to make you aware of that.
Sounds good.
And in terms of upcoming events, as you can see, there are just a multitude of events taking place. There are field trips, there are recognition programs, are much anticipated Memorial Day programs will be taking place next week, and a busy time of year for sure, along with band concerts and such, one being this evening as well. So if you're able to attend any of them, I encourage you to do so. It's a great time to celebrate the achievements our students have made, so lots of fun.
And now move on to business and financial.
So on behalf of Mrs. Worsbicky, we've provided a year-to-date budget report, along with Dr. Lozay and I, Mrs. Worsbicky, Mr. Fahey, Mr. Bouvier, and Mrs. Reedy. We review this regularly to make the best use of funds to be able to impact classrooms. So we continue to do that. To that end, we've included transfers for your approval. Most don't require it, but they're here all for transparency, but the final one does require your approval, so I ask that you please do approve that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the granting of omnibus approval to make transfers to the closeout of fiscal year 2017.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, disapprove.
And please know that, as we do each year, we will report back to you any changes that are made going forward.
Thank you.
The revolving account update has been provided for you, as we do on a quarterly basis. All accounts remain in good standing. And finally, the cafeteria substitutes, as per Mrs. Worsbicky's memo, it is my recommendation, based on hers, that we increase the sub-rate for our food service to $11 an hour.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the increase of the hourly rate for cafeteria substitutes to $11 an hour?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, that's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And do we need an executive session?
We do not this evening, but we do need.
What's this?
Signatures on the, oh, I'm sorry, did you?
Okay.
By screen.
Right.
So I will, I will share with you information, I, I didn't see it at my seat, but we were approached by Town Manager Jacobson, a neighbor adjacent to Swanson Road Intermediate School has expressed interest in buying a small parcel of land, namely at 46 Vine Street. It is my recommendation that you not approve that sale. It's a, Mr. Fahey and I took a look at it. It is a small parcel of land. It's very close to the Arboretum where students were working. I understand why the family would like to purchase it. It would give them a little more space, but I think that, I think it, its proximity to the school, I, I think would not be a good idea. So it is my recommendation that you not approve that sale.
Okay, we don't need.
We would need a motion from you, yes.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a, I'll go.
I'll make a motion not to approve the sale of the land at 46 Vine Street, MAP ID 3219, due to its proximity to Swanson Road Intermediate School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you very much.
And.
We're intending to be signing contracts.
Signing contracts, and we can do that if we adjourn, of course. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Good night, everyone.